I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for August 23, 2022. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Barbo, Blackmer.
Here.
Bona.
Yes.
Harpen, Obasahan.
Here.
Oleskowitz.
Here.
Sapienza.
Here.
Shade.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
Seven present. We have a quorum. Please rise for a moment for the pledge and a moment of silence. Please remember Michael Deep, the former North Adams City Councilor. And the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion for approval of minutes?
We approve.
A second.
Counselor Oleskowitz and Counselor Sapienza comment. Counselor Shade.
Yes, quick question. On in the minute, there's notice that we had roll call votes, but it doesn't list the roll. Is that normal to not list the roll on a roll call vote when it's in the minute?
Typically, I would. That is my apologies, and I'll edit the record for that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Hearing of visitors, anyone who wishes to address the council on agenda items, you have two minutes. Name and address for the record, no personal attacks. Mr. Cardamino?
I would like to address 12157. My name is Robert Cardamino, 173 Squinsey Street. And I see you're gonna post some no parking in different places around the city. Well, you know, that's all well and good, but you know something, unless there's some enforcement, you might as well not even put any signs up. I live on East Squinsey Street, and on one side of that street is no parking, and half the time, there's three or four cars parked on that side plus the other side. And if you're gonna pass some no parking restrictions, make sure there's some enforcement behind it. I have called the police many times, and three or four times, I asked them to leave a ticket. And finally, when this one lady, she finally got the message. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Council Paper 11,826, an ordinance amending the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams regarding the various fees established in the city code. A motion to continue would be in order?
So move, or you want me to make the motion?
Go ahead.
Yeah, motion to continue, to bring back.
Second meeting in September?
Sure, second meeting in September. Second?
Counselor Bona, Counselor Shade, do you want to give us a quick update, Counselor Bona?
Yeah, I can. Yeah. The Finance Committee met at this point. We do have all the suggestions that are in from the different departments. The building health departments were received. We did meet, and unfortunately, due to vacations, we weren't able to get the representatives there to help answer questions we have. But also further in this agenda, you'll see there are some other fees that might be coming up, so we'll probably try to incorporate that all together when we bring these forward in the future.
It'll save us a boatload of money to actually print it, all as a municipal bulletin, and it doesn't make sense to do it separately. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,152, communication from Counselor Sapienza requesting time for he and Anna Farrington of the Public Arts Commission to present a letter of response to Council Paper 11,986. Without objection, I will file the communication. Counselor Sapienza and then Ms. Farrington.
Yes. At our last Public Arts Commission meeting, we had voted to have our chairperson, Anna Farrington, draft a letter in regards to our response based on the original submission of Council Paper 11,986, which is the artistic crosswalks. And at this time, through the chair, I'd like to have Ms. Farrington read her letter, if she would, please.
Good evening. So I'm here. I'm Anna Farrington. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Public Arts Commission, and I'd like to read the letter that we drafted for your consideration. Dear Council President Blackmer, as requested by the City Council in the April 26, 2022, City Council meeting, the Public Arts Commission has re-reviewed Council Paper 11,986 in our meeting on July 18, 2022. Council Paper 11,986 submitted by former Councilor Ben Lamb on July 27, 2021, requested, quote, "A joint review of the concept of artistic crosswalk installations by the Traffic Commission and the Public Arts Commission to include an opinion from KP Law as the city solicitor. The goal being to review the specific issues that such installations would present, what methods we have at our disposal to mitigate those issues, and if the risks associated create a true impasse to pursuing artistic crosswalks," end quote. The Public Arts Commission originally reviewed this paper at its October 2021 meeting and agreed that the Public Arts Commission ordinance did not include crosswalk oversight and voted to forward the paper to the Traffic Commission for their review. The Traffic Commission unanimously moved to file this paper. In the July 18 meeting of the Public Arts Commission, I provided a brief history of this council paper for the PAC's two new commissioners. This brief included the reasons why the Traffic Commission voted to file the paper, and this quote is from the meeting minutes. Quote, "State and federal standards would not be met, which would jeopardize funding. Federal studies have shown artistic crosswalks to be distracting, and the incorrect paint could create dangerously slippery surfaces," end quote. Following the brief, each member of the Public Arts Commission was asked to provide their opinion on the artistic crosswalks question and what they thought the role of the Public Arts Commission should be. Following this discussion, it was moved and unanimously agreed upon to respond with the following. Firstly, the Public Arts Commission does not want to jeopardize any state, federal, or grant funding availability in regards to road or crosswalk maintenance, or otherwise create unsafe conditions by altering the standard crosswalks. Secondly, the Public Arts Commission would like to investigate and further discuss other ways to create artistic streets that would result in traffic calming and promote foot traffic downtown. Examples of this might include artistic interventions such as creating crosswalk zones on either side of the standard crosswalks, bump out zones at crosswalk and sidewalk connections, or artistic intersections, artwork at the center of intersections, none of which would interfere with the standard crosswalks. Thirdly, the Public Art Commission proposes to work towards identifying sources for funding for artistic streetscape projects and is committed to working towards developing such projects with the understanding that the city will fully support the Public Arts Commission's efforts as outlined in the North Adams Public Art Master Plan, Section 4 Administrative Guidelines, Section B Roles and Responsibilities. This would require that the city assign a city staff person to the Public Arts Commission who would be available to assist us in the project's development, management, oversight, and coordination with City Hall. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any comments or questions? Counselor Bona?
No, a quick question. Did you get our response back from KP Law?
I did not work with KP Law.
Oh, I thought PAC. Did I misunderstand?
No, we did not contact the KP Law directly at all.
Was that our, was that, I'm sorry, was that our responsibility?
I'm sorry. No, no, I thought the way I understood this, that KP Law was being asked.
Former Councilor Lamb suggested that the city solicitor be asked for their opinion also on the artistic crosswalks question.
Okay, but that never.
It doesn't look like that happened.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, sorry about that. I misunderstood.
No worries. I think that would be helpful, actually.
Counselor Shade.
Yes, through the chair, just a quick point in reading the paper. It's great. Thank you for doing the research, looking into everything. When I see the letters PAC capitalized together, I think.
That's Public Arts Commission.
Or I think Super PAC.
Oh.
So a lot of people think that as well. I had people asking me, like, why is there a PAC involved in this? So I would just, for clarification, recommend using periods in between, so it's not looking like political PAC.
Noted. Thank you.
Or even just to refer to it as a commission in the paper, so that way it doesn't. But I had somebody ask me about that, and I kind of thought it too at first until I realized, oh, yeah, it's Public Arts Commission. So just a point.
We've been calling it the PAC for a while. Sorry. Anything else?
Briefly, yeah, I just, again, thank you. I am, you know, I know, you know, I pushed for some of this, and I'm glad, you know, the direction it's going. So hopefully, we'll see some cool art down the road.
Well, I'd love to, I'd love to get the city's support, and, you know, we're an unfunded volunteer commission, and so I think it would be beneficial to the city to give us some support from a staff person.
Why is my phone ringing?
Taking Collins now?
That's right. Caller on line one.
City Council hotline?
New Liberty, Kentucky. Can I just pick it up and hang up? I would also like to, I was in Bristol, Rhode Island, a couple weeks ago, and they have red, white, and blue instead of yellow lines in the middle of the road telling you not to cross into the other lane. They have, they were red, white, and blue, or they were red and blue. I forget. They were colored. And I know one of the issues that I've heard from the public that are in support of this is, we go to other communities around the country, we go to other communities around the state, and I think there's probably even a few in Berkshire County where there is art. We are on the streets and the crosswalks. And I know that Mr. Cardamino doesn't like it because the paint is slippery and motorcycles can have accidents. But it seems like there's mixed messages out there. Maybe it's, it's easier to ask forgiveness and permission, and that's been the attitude of some of these or these communities that have gone on and done the work. But I knew that that is one of the things that I kept hearing, including I did take pictures of the, the street, the lines in the street in Bristol, which is in Rhode Island, which is in the United States and subject to federal law. And these were main thoroughfares, so. But this issue has been discussed, I think, ad nauseam at this point, so let's just move on. Council, we're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Paper 12,153, Communication from City Clerk Valiers requesting to allow the police chief and city clerk the responsibility to assign police officers to the polling place on Election Day. So the motion would be to allow the responsibility to remain that of the police chief and the city clerk to assign the specific police officers to the polling place. That would be the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Counselor Oleskowitz, seconded by.
I'll second.
Counselor Shade, and comments. Counselor Shade, you had a comment question?
I had asked a question earlier, just to kind of understand a little better. The new law, I guess, would change the procedure to essentially allow the city council or a town board to kind of oversee and vote on. And with us working directly with the clerk's office, it makes sense to allow this change to keep things moving rather than having to go through us for permission. So I'm completely in favor.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is a.
I was gonna say, with the timeframe that we're under, we, there's no time to send this to committee anyway, and it, I think we're all in agreeance that this is.
No, I think, I don't know if it would be a paper that would come forward with the names. I don't think, I think when you're scheduling people like that, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Yes.
This is a roll call vote, though.
Bona?
Yes.
Obasahan?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Blackmer?
Yes. Seven ayes. Motion carries. Mayor's Communication, Council Paper 9513-31, Mayor's Communication 85 to amend Chapter 7, Section 7-11 of the Revised Ordinances of North Adams regarding changes on permit prices. Without objection, I'm gonna file the communication and move directly on to the ordinance. Council Paper 9513-31, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 7, Section 7-11 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding Change of Permit Prices. Motion to refer to public services and jointly to, when they're done, back to finance to add to the numerous other fees that we're dealing with.
Motion to revert back to public services, and I don't know if it's proper to do it with the absence of Counselor Harpen, who is Chair of that committee, to offer a return date of the second meeting in September?
We can do it, and then we'll send her a note, and if it doesn't work, we'll, we'll get it done. We'll get them done by the end of the calendar year. So you have a motion, and we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Bona, and conversation, Counselor Bona.
Yes. When did we just refer the first paper back? Didn't we say the second week of September on that, too?
Yeah.
Wouldn't we actually want this to come back before that, because we would be incorporating these into?
But you could kick, she could send it straight to finance. It doesn't have to come back right to us and then go to finance.
Right, but finance, we're saying, will come back the end of September.
Right.
This, we would seem like we'd want it to come back sooner so that it could go into, go to finance, be part of the paper that comes back.
I would send it to both. That's why I suggested a motion to send to both. You can ask Counselor, Counselor Harpen to get it to you when she's done. You don't really need, I don't think we need to have, it doesn't have to go to public services, come back, go to finance, and come back. It can go from public services to finance without coming back to us.
All right.
So that would be my suggestion. That would give plenty of time for them to meet and us to meet. Does that make sense? Okay. Any other discussion? Counselor Shade.
Do we need to amend the original motion to include finance?
No.
Did you include finance?
Wasn't it already a motion prior to send the first paper to finance? I mean, this right now has to go back, I believe, with participation from the administration to public services. This, this one's defined as just the, I believe, the transfer station.
It's the transfer station, but it's still part of the whole thing that we're doing.
No, I, I think it's finance.
It is, but you can, just make sure you get it so we can talk about it.
Yeah, I think it's fine, and they can refer it to finance without it having to be approved here.
Okay.
Yeah, technically, we, a committee can choose to do things that are not sent to them by the, by the council. So we have a motion and a second to refer to public services with a return date of the, and second meeting in September, along with the other ordinance fee changes we're looking at. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,154, Mayor's Communication 86, Seeking Confirmation of a List of Election Wardens and Inspectors for the Term September 1st to September 22nd, September 1st, 2022 through August 31, 2023. A motion to confirm would be in order.
So move.
Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Oleskowitz. Discussion? Mayor, would you like to add?
I just want to add one thing, that this list is in addition to the list you approved prior, at the prior meeting.
You mean, we're not gonna run the elections with just like five people?
No, but just want to clarify that.
Thank you. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,155, Mayor's Communication Number 87, Requesting Time for a Proclamation in Support of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Without objection, file the communication. And Mayor, you can proclaim.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Kathy and Joe Arabia to join me. Today, we have a proclamation designating September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, whereas the City of North Adams and our northern Berkshire community have been impacted with childhood cancer, as we have been community, as communities across the country and all around the world. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of disease related to the death of children, and whereas 42 children are diagnosed with cancer every day in this country, and whereas because of the treatments that had, they had as kids, more than 95% of the childhood cancer survivors will develop a chronic health problem, and 80% will have severe or life-threatening conditions. And whereas more than 40,000 children undergo treatment for cancer each year. And whereas although the overall five-year survival rate is now over 80%, there are still some childhood brain cancers where the survival rate is less than 1%. And whereas every day, five children will die of childhood cancer in this country. And whereas worldwide, a child is diagnosed with cancer every 80 seconds. And whereas despite these statistics, childhood cancer receives only 4% of federal funding for cancer research and is consistently underfunded by pharmaceutical companies. Now, therefore, I, Jennifer A. Maxey, Mayor of the City of North Adams, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and call on our residents' support to support efforts to increase awareness and support of childhood cancer research for better treatments and cures. And I'd also like to thank the Arabia family for all the work that they do with this. I know it's near and dear to your heart, and what you do every day is so important to us. Kathy, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate the support of Mayor Maxey and also City Council and this community. These numbers are staggering, and they are not getting better quick enough for any of the children that are impacted by this disease. We are helping more and more families since the last time we were here. We've connected with more families in Berkshire County, in the local area. We've connected with, in the past few years, over 25 families. So this is close to home for us, and it's in our community. And we're fighting to make a difference for these kids, and we just appreciate all the support of this community. It really does make a difference. Awareness makes a difference. It does lead to the advocacy work, and it does help support research, and the research is making a difference. The scientists and the researchers that we are working with really are making a difference and making discoveries every day that will lead to effective treatments for these kids. So thank you so much.
I just want to echo what Kathy has said. And just to let the, for the new members of the council who haven't been here since last year, we're very committed to the work that we do. Each day, we're, we're out there, you know, advocating, talking with people, letting them know what we do, how we do it, and who, you know, the people that we're serving. And, you know, we've gotten great support. This year, you know, we're allowed to do some in-person fundraising, which we've been on hiatus for almost two and a half years. So we're, that'll give us greater ability to raise funds, so we can continue our research that's presently going on now. And we don't want to lose ground. We've, we've got the momentum, and we've got a lot of people who are willing and ready to, you know, to jump in and do whatever, whatever it takes. We'll be planning our fourth international research conference coming up in the fall of '23, and it's going to be held in New York City with all our partners from Europe and in the United States coming together to see how far we've come since the last meeting in 2019, which was held in Barcelona, Spain. So we're excited. We're, we want to keep moving forward, and we just appreciate the support. So thank you all.
We do want to mention that some of what you'll be seeing around the community is that the North Adams Police Department is supporting childhood cancer awareness also, and has police patches for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, which we're really excited about. And Masmoka is lighting their iconic upside-down trees gold for the month also. So these make such a difference to us, and if you see any of the comments on social media, it's already gone across the country, just with the police department's doing, the proclamation here tonight, and the support of this community. So thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do. Council Paper 12,156, Mayor's Communication Number 88 to amend Chapter 8, Section 22, Entitled Department of Public Safety Regarding Qualifications of Police. Without objection, I will file a communication and move on to the ordinance. Council Paper 12,156, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 8, Section 22, Entitled Department of Public Safety Regarding the Qualifications of Police. I would refer this, a motion to refer to public safety would be in order.
So moved. Second?
Counselor Bona, Counselor Shade. Any discussion? Do we want a date certain?
Yes, please.
When do you, well, who's public safety? Counselor Sapienza?
I think we can probably manage this by the second meeting of September.
Okay. That would be helpful. Thank you. Coordinate with the chief to make sure that he can be there for the meeting.
Will do.
We, anyone else?
Do we need to amend that, or is that our, just throwing in that first motion?
No, it's just my comment.
Okay.
That's me editorializing.
Okay.
Or giving direction. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,157, Mayor's Communication 89, To Amend the Entitled Motor Vehicle and Traffic Article 5, Stopping, Standing, or Parking Generally, Section 13-49 Regarding Parking Prohibition on Certain Streets. Without objection, file a communication and move on to the ordinance. Council Paper 12,157, An Ordinance to Amend the Entitled Motor Vehicle and Traffic Article 5, Stopping, Standing, or Parking Generally, Section 13-49 Regarding Parking and Parking Prohibition on Certain Streets. Refer, motion to refer to public safety would be in order?
So moved. Second?
Counselor Shade, Counselor Oleskowitz. Any discussion?
With a return date?
Return date.
Probably same time.
The second meeting in.
September.
Yeah, okay. Counselor?
I just wanted to say I will coordinate these two subjects, and at the convenience of the chief, we will convene a public safety meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,158, Mayor's Communication Number 90, To Amend the Entitled Motor Vehicle and Traffic Article 6, Parking Meter, Section 13-61, Regarding Fees for Parking in Public Lots During Large Events in City Council, August 23, 2022. Without objection, I will file the communication and move on to the ordinance. Council Paper 12,158, An Ordinance to Amend the Entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic Article 6, Parking Meter, Section 13-61, Regarding Fees for Parking in Public Lots During Large Events. A motion to refer to public safety would be in order.
So moved. Second?
Counselor Shade, Counselor Sapienza. Counselor Wilkinson?
We've just gone through a bunch of agenda items here, and we've referred them to public safety, using chapter, section, all this kind of stuff. But people that may be watching might be interested in what we're actually voting on. In this particular case, it's about trying to set up a fee structure for public events in the city lots, which is $40 a day. And it's a matter, I have no problem sending it certainly to public safety, but sometimes people watch on TV or whether their, or their watch goes, I don't understand what they're doing. So that's what we're doing.
And you can also find it in the documents that are online with the agenda.
You could, but some people don't do that.
Some people don't do that. So, yes, correct. Counselor Shade.
Should this also be seen by the Traffic Commission, just?
It wasn't.
I think, I think it went to Traffic.
Okay, so it's coming back from Traffic and now going to Public.
Mayor, did you have something to add?
Yes, I was hoping that we could have this returned in the first meeting in September. Yes, I was hoping that we could have this return in the first meeting in September, because we do have an event coming up this September 22nd, 23rd. And I think our meeting is after that, our second meeting. Could you verify that, Clerk Valiers?
It would be the 13th plus 14, it would be the 27th. The only, we'd also have to pub, so you want to have this published?
I'd like to move it along, so I'm in compliance with our regulations.
Okay, I just, well, no, I understand that. I just know that that adds on to, the clerk's going to have to get it published. Because the motion right now would then be changed to publish it, move to publish required, as required by law. But we could get that done in time for the next meeting? What's the deadline? There's also a holiday in there.
Because I, I do want to proceed forward with our plan. This is our pilot year for testing this. If everything goes through with the City Council, we're also going to include Center Street with a focus on providing parking, ensuring parking for our residents, as well as business parking. So this will be a good time for us to deploy our efforts and refine our process. But I, you know, want to, I don't want to have two events without the proper approval.
Okay. Counsel Bona?
And, you know, I do support collecting fees with some of these events. The concern I have is part of this may require what the definition of a large event is, and then, does that give the city discretion to decide which large events to charge for and which large events not? Because Fall Foliage Parade, Eagle Street Beach Party, those also fill up parking lots.
Most of them will be events that come to the city that are non-city sponsored events.
And I, I get that, but that's, may need to be defined. And that may be a good example of a non-public event. So, just as I don't want to see down the road someone saying you're discriminating because you're saying you're going to charge for my event, but you're not charging for this event.
I'm the fairest Mary you got, Keith.
What's that?
I'm the fairest Mary you got.
Okay.
So, we could rescind the motion, and make a new motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law. And in the meantime, I'll also send it to legal, would be part of my motion, to solicit a solicitor for an opinion. Who made the motion?
An opinion of what?
Well, I think, or more, further, we need a further definition of event. Does it say, it just says designate as a event parking. Title fees for different parking zones hereby delete, and it's been place event parking at the discretion of the mayor, certain events, so that, basically, I get that.
Can I just chime in?
Yep.
So, a few weeks ago, or maybe a month ago, when we were talking about the taxi drivers, there was some discussion that you wanted the discount at the discretion of the mayor, and I didn't want that, because I didn't want to be accused of discriminating in that fashion. But this is pretty clear cut. You know, this, these are non-city sponsored events that are tying up a lot of city resources, and this is a way to generate some money to put back into our public safety department, and also to have some order in these public lots, which we're lacking.
Counsel Shade.
Would it be appropriate to make a motion to amend the language to include those words, the non-city sponsored events in the language, and then continue from there?
Well, either way, if we're, what we really need to decide is if we're going to refer this, the motion on the table is to refer to public safety, as opposed to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law. I would like to settle that issue before we go on to language. Are we going to, who made the amendment? I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I believe I did.
Okay. So, or do you want to rescind your motion, or do you still want to send it to public safety and wait?
I am okay with rescinding if everybody else sees that that's the appropriate thing to do.
Counsel Luskowitz.
Looking at the calendar, is there, I don't think the timeframe's there to further go to committee and come back and pass to a second reading.
Well, that's my point.
Yes.
That was my point. We have to do-
So we would have to establish it tonight.
I mean, it could go before the committee, but it would have to be in a hurry if there was any objections. You can do both, but if, to have this on the agenda in ti, and to be approved for the event that the mayor's referring to, it has to be referred to, passed to a second reading, which would be the next meeting on the 12th, and published as required by law. And we can still meet the publishing deadline even with the holiday in there, right?
Yep.
Okay. So Counsel Shade is, will rescind her motion, so the next motion would be, the motion would be to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
Make a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law?
Do you want to refer it to public safety?
I would still think it should go to committee.
And, okay, and refer to public safety.
So we have to have a special meeting to beat the timeframe?
No.
Good.
You do them both at the same time.
Yeah.
And the only thing is, what would happen is, okay, do we have a second to the Counselor?
Second.
Second. You refer it, in the two weeks, we publish it, that's all, that gets done. Counselor Sapienza holds a public safety committee meeting, discusses this. If there's any major changes, then we would have to republish. If there's no major changes, they wouldn't have to. We're also going to talk about the language now that we have a motion and a second, and we're going to refer back to Counsel Shade, who was talking about defining events.
Yes, so would it be?
Did I follow the bouncing ball?
Is it now appropriate to move to amend the language to say, at the discretion of the mayor, certain non-city sponsored events and locations shall be designated?
Second.
Do you?
So, by understanding, you're putting non-city?
Non-city sponsored events.
In, in front of where it says event.
Correct. Non-city sponsored would be in front of the word events. So that way, it's specifying that clearly, that city-sponsored events would not be used in anybody by those ordinance.
Mayor, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes.
Counsel Wilkinson?
I'm forgetting to look over this way.
Well, I was waiting for the mayor to respond.
I understand, but I had him to hand up four times today, and you've gone to everybody else. So, saying that, I wanted to know, the mayor said that he was, she, excuse me, she was going to make sure that residents had proper parking during these, and this is one of the things that people have come, how are you going to ensure that?
Residents that get-
That live, that have parking permits there, how are we going to monitor somebody not slipping in their, their spot?
Well, this, for example, we're going to have more staff, more volunteers monitoring those parking lots. All of the people who currently have permits will have a reserved space with either their permit number or their license plate number on them, so we can verify that the car parked in that area matches their permit or their plate number. And we're going to mark them off, and if people park in, you know, the designated spot, they're going to get ticketed, or they're going to get towed.
I like towing better.
Okay, well, we try not to tow our guests. But, you know, Center Street has really gotten away from us, and it's gotten away from prior administrations, and this is our attempt to try to streamline that and have an SOP around how we handle big events in the city. So it's part of a bigger plan, but we're sensitive to those people who buy permits, not only in Center Street, but also St. Anthony's Parking Lot, that, you know, they've paid for space, and that they have space when they come home from work, or when they come home from getting groceries. So we're sensitive to that, and we're going to, we're going to try everything we can. But we will have spaces designated and blocked off, but more specifically in Center Street, you know, we're concerned about the businesses that are open on Friday and Saturday. Sunday's a little, a lesser day, but basically Saturday and Sunday, and we're going to split the lot right in half. And when things close, we'll, we'll open it up. But we, we need to do a better job in Center Street, and we recognize that.
Thank you.
Can I also make a recommendation? The signage in Center Street says permit parking, like Monday to Fridays?
Yeah.
Eight to six. Can we cover those signs?
Yeah.
Because if I were going somewhere out of town to some event, and it said permit parking only, and then had hours, and it wasn't those hours, I would think I could park there.
Yeah.
I mean, some of it is, we need to monitor it better, so that people don't, I don't think people are intentionally not following.
Right, the, the signage in that parking lot is horrible, so that's being addressed as well.
I've had that conversation before. Okay, Counsel Bona?
Sort of extending off of Counsel Wilkinson, interestingly enough, I have a feeling the fine that is set if someone parks in a permit parking spot is probably less than the fee. Now, they don't have to know that, but it's probably a $20 fine to park in a permitted parking spot, and $40 to park legally.
That's why we have a plan around trying to control that.
Just making a note.
Let's change it. I'm sorry.
It is, it's in our fees.
Let's do that soon, too.
You know, I, I have to chuckle, I'm trying the best I can to manage this, and it's been years that we've been having this event. So I say to you, give me some tools to work with folks, and we'll do better each year.
Right. And I, I have no problem with this, I think we should be. I also know that the farmer's market was a real problem on Saturday, and it wasn't even one of the quote, "big concerts." By, when I went at noon, there was no parking. And so, because the event started at noon, it was filling up, and I know in the past, that parking lot has been monitored during the, during the farmer's market to make sure that people parking there were actually-
Those are, those are all things that this administration is sensitive to and will be addressing as we move forward.
And they have done it in the past, and I'm not saying it hasn't been done. I guess, I think what happens is now that we've got the big events, we've got Wilco, we've got Fresh Grass, now they're bringing in other concerts that are bringing in 5,000 people who are eating and drinking and shopping, and it's great, but we didn't used to think about it. It was either Wilco, or it was just Mocha. And now that we're having several events that are drawing big crowds, yay for us, but we have to think differently about it.
Absolutely, and that's what this administration is doing.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to pass to a second reading, publish as required by law, and refer to public safety.
Need an amendment first, so we need to-
Oh, right, we have to vote on the, okay. Okay, we need to vote as amended. The, so we've amended the ordinance to say, at the discretion of the mayor, certain non-city sponsored events and locations shall be designated as event parking at a rate of $40 per day. So, we have a motion and a second on the amendment, we're voting on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion on the amendment carries. Now, we have a motion and a second to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, and to refer to Public Safety Committee as, the ordinance as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. I know that was kind of convoluted. Mayor's, Council Paper 12,159, Mayor's Communication Number 91, to appoint Jennifer Dunning as a member of the Windsor Lake Recreation Commission for a term to expire April 1st, 2025. Motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Wilkinson, Luskowitz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anyone wish to address their counsel in open forum on issues of municipal significance? Mr. Calamino? You have two minutes and no personal attacks.
After reviewing Rule 11 of open forum, it is in direct conflict with the Constitution, the First Amendment to the Constitution of free speech. The words shall avoid personalities, libelous remarks, and innuendos. Speakers shall limit their remarks to matters of municipal interest. In the past, speakers have covered almost any subject they want to talk about without objection from the council president, except when it comes to certain speakers. I suggest council review Rule 11 and bring it into compliance with the First Amendment to the Constitution, the right to free speech. After calling, being called out of order at open forum, if it happens again, I will challenge the president and the council with violating my civil rights, and have a civil rights lawyer bring some charges. And also, I would like to say, Robert Smith has been given a lot of good advice. Listen to him. He's the opposite of Lozinski. He has the ammunition. He just needs a ride, and I don't need one mean one-way out of town. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the counsel on an issue of municipal significance? Mr. Smith?
I'm Robert Smith. I live at 163 North Street. I want to thank Mr. Calamino for letting the council know that, yes, you should be listening not only to me, but other people in the public sector, any resident who lives in North Adams. But I find you have deaf ears a lot of times. You've got to unclog your ears and listen to the people. It's very essential for running this government. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Mayor's concerns? Or updates? Okay, next. Committee reports in minutes? Liaison updates and counselors' concerns?
I don't know if anyone's got any information on Motorama?
I don't have it, it's Sunday.
Sunday, Sunday.
Nine to three.
Thank you.
And then there's an election on the 6th, and before we meet the next time, as you've heard, or maybe seen the, all the people helping out in the clerk's office, so make sure you get out and vote. Can't complain, your vote doesn't count. We've seen so many elections where the margin was very narrow, so get out and vote. No correspondence. Motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.